We are in council chambers. Please make sure your cell phones are off and placed on silent and that your microphones are turned on. This is a committee of the whole, but first we will have our individual committee meetings, starting with street sidewalks and lighting, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call the Street Sidewalk and Lighting Committee to order. It is Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We are in council chambers. Everyone in the committee is present except for President Greer and other members noted on my sheet. This evening, we have one request for legislation, a letter from Todd Shreve, Director of Public Service, requesting legislation to appropriate $230,000 from the unappropriated item of the Street Capital Fund to the capital budget of the Street Capital Fund for the Concrete Road Program. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Please see request for details, and we are referring this to Finance. Are there any remarks from my committee on this item? May I have a motion to call this for a vote?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no pending legislation. For miscellaneous discussion, I would like to just go over an email that was sent, I think, earlier today via Vanessa Johnson. It's a little Worcester Road West update. Kind of goes into the past a little bit. So, the first week of July, the traffic shifted to the north side. South Side Waterline tie-ins began. Brick walkway and driveway pores were underway. ADA ramps, catch basins, tops, and asphalt prep completed. The week of the 17 -- I'm sorry, 7/14, prep for water tie-in on the south side, grading and tentative pours for walks, driveways, and ramps. And then lastly, this week, water main service, 4th through 27th Streets, 24th, still on Old Main -- oh, they're still on the old main. So, like, main water. South Side tie-in began this week, continued sidewalk and driveway prep, tentative pours, and deck overlays at Wolf Creek and Hudson Run. There was a crew member -- some absences in the crew, so there was a little bit of a setback the week prior. But that was my quick little update, since we gave an update on the street paving two weeks ago. Just a little bit of update for you for Worcester Road West. Does anybody else have anything for miscellaneous discussion in the committee?
I got one question. Fifth and Creedmore, I know the railroad has something to do with the paving between the tracks. Is that gonna happen when the road's done, or are they not gonna -- have we been in contact with them?
I'd have to confirm if we are in contact with them, but as they're legally responsible for the asphalt, cleaning the tracks, and so many feet on either side, typically not easy to get them to respond to the needs of the tracks. So, I'd have to confirm. I don't believe anything's made, but I'd have to confirm.
Go ahead, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the rest of council? Okay. From the gallery? Okay. Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. We are adjourned at 6:04.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Vice President Griffin. Environmental Health and Social Services meeting tonight, July 21st, 2025, in council chambers. All members of my committee are present except for Justin Greer, and all other members of council are present. As long as a guest note is noted on my sheet. We have one -- I have one request referred from utilities, a letter from Councilman-at-Large Thomas Heideck requesting a resolution condemning first energy for liability of service and requesting $100 credit to Barburton residents. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Is there any remarks? Do I have a motion to call for this?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, you know, pending legislation, miscellaneous discussion. I talked to Andy Dobbins from the Mosquito Abatement District. So far, because I saw on Facebook today, actually it was a post from Stark County Health Department about West Niles virus being found in mosquitoes. So, I called Andy. So far, there have been 12 instances where they have found mosquitoes with the West Niles virus. They -- Barburton locations and Dave's trapped were Oakwood Street on the 11th of July, East Tussie Extension the 3rd of July, and the 11th of July, South Banbury Run, the 26th and 27th of June, Morgan Street, the 12th and 27th of June, Hillsdale Avenue, the 11th of July, and the other two are Norton locations. Obviously, when they do find West Niles virus, they do go out and spray the area heavily just as precaution, you know, don't leave any sitting water. If you have bird baths, make sure you're cleaning them out regularly, you know, wear proper clothing, or he even, and I never even thought of this, if you're sitting outside at night, have a fan blowing on you because it'll blow mosquitoes away since they're so light, they can't land on you because of the fan. I never thought of that. But yeah, just, you know, common sense stuff. They do have a Facebook page and their website, just mad mosquito abatement district. You can go to that, and they update that regularly. And we're actually turned in the highest number of mosquitoes for tussing in the state of Ohio so far this year, so. And that said, anything miscellaneous from my committee or the body from the gallery? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And with that, we are adjourned at 6:07.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Planning, Annexation, and Codes, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Annexation, and Codes, it's Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 6:07 p.m. in council chambers. The committee is present, which consists of Councilor Thompson, Vice President Griffin, excuse me, Councilor Harris, and myself as chair, all others noted. We have absolutely nothing, but the director is here. Director?
I don't have anything for you. If you guys have questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Well, there's one question we always have.
All of the comments are in minus the signed section of the development code. There's some pretty extensive work that we need to do on that one. It's not the best, so I'm actively working on the signed section, but all the other comments are in for review.
And how's the search for an assistant planning director going?
I am working with the HR department to possibly get that moving forward.
All right. Any other questions? Look, I think you got some there, counselor.
Not right now.
You sure? Okay. Hey, from the gallery. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:08.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. We have City Properties, Parks, and Recreation with -- Finance?
Finance.
Finance and personnel, okay?
All right.
With Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, July 31st, 2025, 6:09 p.m., here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, with the exception of President Greer. That includes myself as chair, Mr. Heideck, and Mr. Griffin. All other council members are also present, as well as guests, as noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation this evening, the first being a letter from Dave Polacheck requesting legislation to appropriate $24,363.02 from the unappropriated line item of the general fund to the fire department's operation and maintenance budget in the general fund, to pay an invoice to Life Force Management for ambulance billing. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Are there any remarks? Why do you look like you have a question?
No question here.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, this was referred from Streets, a request from Todd Shreve, our Director of Public Service, requesting legislation to appropriate $230,000 from the unappropriated item of the Street Capital Fund to the capital budget of the Street Capital Fund for the Concrete Road Program. Emergency wording and one reading requested. This is a 50-50 with OPWC grant. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Next up, this was referred from Safety, a letter from Chief Morber of the Barburton Police Department requesting legislation to appropriate $10,000 from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the police department's operating and maintenance budget of the general fund. Funds will be coming from a received MDT/keyboard grant from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. Emergency wording requested, as these funds must be spent by the end of the year. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have no appointments at this time. Go ahead and open it up to miscellaneous for Finance and Personnel. Anything from the committee, the body, the gallery? I don't see Mr. Flicker back there. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
We are adjourned at 6:12.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Tonight, we also have a special City Utilities meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, 21st, 2025, July. We're all in council chambers. All my members are present except Justin Greer. He is absent. First request, a letter from Todd Shreve requesting legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into joint application between the City of Norton and the City of Barburton to apply for the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, State Capital Improvement. Yes, there.
Yes. The vice chair of the committee should make the call from Utilities Committee? Is that the committee you chair?
Yes.
Yeah. So, it should be the vice chair of that committee making the call?
Okay.
And the call for Norton's. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, there. I'm sorry.
Okay. We have requested legislation, a letter from Todd Shreve requesting legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint application with the City of Norton and the City of Barburton to apply for the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, State Capital Improvement Program to provide for the financial assistance through grants, loans, and loan assistance, or local debt support, as outlined in the attached agreement. Emergency wording and one reading requested, as the deadline to apply is September 5th. So, we would need to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend, and then Council Rule 302 to ten-day rule.
Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion to invoke the 702 rule. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And then, Council Rule 302, ten-day rule, do I have a motion to invoke?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Excuse me, a second. You want to suspend, not invoke, 302.
Oh, okay.
So, your motion is to suspend?
A motion to suspend 302.
And invoke 702.
And invoke, okay.
That's your motion.
All right. So, invoke, suspend Council Rule 302, the ten-day rule, and invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend. Okay. So, Emily, you made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sure, good. Okay. And do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Or, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Do I have?
Those in favor? Those in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, do I have a motion to call for this?
I will make that motion, too.
And a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, that is all for this special meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
And we are adjourned at 6:15.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up will be Rules Marketing and Development, special.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call the Special Rules Marketing and Development Committee to order. It is Monday, July 21st, 2025. Time is 6:16 p.m., and we are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, excluding myself as chair, Emily Becca's co-chair, and Mr. Heideck. President Greer is absent. All the members are noted on my sheet, as well as everyone in the gallery. By virtue of the prevailing side, a request to reconsider amending Article 4, Section 4.02, changing the appointing authority to the service director for the city engineer position and making it classified, has been made by Mrs. Beck. Can I have a motion to reconsider?
Can I make that motion?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. By virtue of the prevailing side, a request to reconsider amending Article 4, Section 4.02, changing the appointing authority to the service director for the supervisor of utilities and making it classified, has been made by Mrs. Beck. Can I have a motion to reconsider?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is all for our special rules meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I had a -- I don't know who I spoke to this week, but I spoke to a person. So, when the building commissioner, Division of Building Inspection, there were kind of dual propositions out there. One was the one introduced by Mr. Heideck and Mr. Harris. So, in light of that introduction, Councilmember Gerhart did not propose language to make the building, Division of Building Inspector, Building Commissioner, consistent with engineering and utilities. I'm just not sure. I believe I might have even talked to you today, the Councilmember Beck, about it. I don't know what you guys want to do with that.
I believe we were amending it on the floor.
Okay. Super. Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That concludes our special.
I need to close it out real quick.
Yeah, close it out.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:18 p.m. With that, I pass.
Special meeting, though, we will take a 10-minute break before we go into committee of the whole.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have two speakers, and the first one will be Mr. Richard Spiegel. Would you come to the mic, sir? State your name, address.
Yes, I'm Richard Spiegel. I live at 304 Wonderland Avenue in Bobbiton. So I've got some concerns that I want addressed to the council. So I have trouble hearing. I've lost my hearing touch. So I'm truly glad. The one topic I'm gonna, we've talked about it, about the geese. The situation is getting worse. It's up to the main sidewalk now. There's about 25 to 31 geese. There's five in the morning, there's 25 to 30. But it's got to the point now, it's all, what I would recommend to council, that you could take, you can get cat litter and put it down. You gotta take care of, you'll have to sweep it up in a couple of days. Or you could get a sidewalk cleaning machine to clean it. So that's two options. And we also talked about the handrails around the Lake Anna situation. We've had a lady Saturday here at the gazebo, elderly woman, was walking down. She did all she did to let down. Now, if the handrail would've been there, I think things would've been okay. She got down there, so when I took my walk around the park, I stopped and waited till she leapt. And she did all she could to get back up. So that's a concern. The other situations is with the mayor's office. I've talked to the mayor's secretary. We made a trip, her and the other secretary, we made a trip around the lake end, and I showed them my concerns. The person being here at the gazebo, there's a part of a sidewalk that goes, goes down. And I also talked to him about the handrails. That that needs to be placed, taken out or whatever. The other end of the Lake Anna, over here, there's a sidewalk that goes up. There's a gentleman, and the second, the mayor's secretary said she knew this person. This person is handicapped. He walks every morning with a cane. He's bent over, his legs are wrapped. The one morning, he walked up that particular area. It's unsafe. I brought this for the, this is one thing that concerns me. To this day, there's nothing been done. I've got no response. I sent my report to the mayor's office, and what I wanted, what I want from him is to step down. He is not, he is not helping the community one bit. So if the bottle has, if the mayor has any rebuttal about that situation, he can stand up and talk.
I'll allow you to speak, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate Mr. Spiegel's comments. He first came to one of our meetings when we had to relocate to the Accra Health Center. At that time, the only issue was porta pott. So we went back the next day. We ordered a porta pott, and so one of the reasons that the porta potts are locked in the restroom down there is because they get vandalized. And so we'll have a Friday concert, people will go over there to make sure everything's in order, and it's a, it's been totally wrecked. So now they have to take time, when they're supposed to be doing other things to get ready for the concert and clean the porta pott. But we were able to get another porta pott over by the visitor's center. We have a group, including myself, that go over periodically and check the porta pott to make sure it's not vandalized and is in working condition. So that was the thing that we took care of. Mr. Spiegel then came in several times. I've offered to meet with him, and he has not taken me up on that. Came in just last week, and that's when my assistants walked around the lake and took pictures of concerns and issues. So we've made notes, we've talked about it internally. You just can't go and order railings. The railings at the gazebo are being addressed. There's quite a bit of work being done there. Mr. Chief Polacek, Azakwana's, and their group are working on that as we speak. Sidewalks throughout the lake have been shaved down in high spots to make it a little more even and flat. The geese, this has been an issue for many, many years, way before I was mayor. We have done the loud boom to scare them off. We have hired dogs to chase them. We've put dog silhouettes up. We've talked to ODNR, we've talked to Springfield Lake, who used ODNR. We bought a remote control boat to kind of go out on the lake, like a little speedboat to scare them off. These are federally protected, and so we're, you know, not that it makes any better, but we're not alone. Anyone that's got a lake has really got issues. A number of years ago, we did test a number of sidewalk scrubbers, sidewalk cleaners. All that did was smear the waste into the sidewalk. I agree that there's gotta be something we can do. There is a small window that the federal government will allow. It's my understanding that if a goose is born here, that it will always return to where it was born or learned to fly. So a lot of them come back. ODNR, if you've filled out an application and exhausted every way of kind of, mainly getting them off the lake and nothing works, sometimes they will allow you to hire a group to come in and round them up, physically round them up. They did this out in Springfield Lake, took a number of years and applications. So we've looked at that and tried to walk through that scenario. But that doesn't stop future geese from coming, right? So wherever you have bodies of water, you're gonna have possibility of geese, and unfortunately, you know, they make, they make a mess. And so it's in the grass, it's on the sidewalk. So we've looked for a number of alternatives and ways to address this. It's not something easily, easily addressable. They are federally protected, that's why you have to go through ODNR. Like I said, through that program of physically rounding them up and removing them, there's a short window when you can do that. But I believe that's in the springtime. So Mr. Spiegel was in the office today, dropped off a copy of a letter that he passed out this evening. I was in a meeting, we mess up, brought it back to me, as we will. Is he here? You know, I'll meet with him. No, he doesn't wanna meet with you. He's not in the office anymore. So we will continue to address concerns. We have concerns throughout the city. Our employees are not sitting around doing nothing. Even if we were to order railings, can't even tell you what the lead time is to get those in, right? So the issues that were brought up, those are my responses. We take any type of feedback or complaint seriously, and we wanna address them. I believe the incline walkway from the top, from the bottom rung inclined up to the top rung on the north side of the lake has never had railings. There are multiple ways to get from the top to the bottom and vice versa. Some are more inclined than others. So there's, there's a multitude of ways of getting around, including steps and multiple sides of the lake. But we take these complaints seriously, and we're looking at how we best address these. If council has any questions for me?
I'm getting two different situations on this, closing of the restroom.
Mr. Spiegel, that'll be all. We're not gonna have a debate on between you and the mayor about this. We have a talk point later.
Anyways, good closing, I would like to invite the council members and the mayor to my street on Wednesday at 3:00 a.m. I would appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Devonport from Barberton Tree Service.
Hello, my name is Lisa Devonport, and I'm the president of Barberton Tree Service. I'm proud to say that for over 28 years, I've been a part of what I consider to be the best tree care team in the area, perhaps anywhere. As some of you may know, our company employs over 65 men and women in this community at our location, and about another 40 at one of our sister companies. We own and operate over 100 trucks and pieces of equipment and provide a wide range of services from routine shrub trimming to complex crane assisted removals and everything in between. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the proposed nuisance tree program currently under consideration by the safety committee and council. As I mentioned, Barberton Tree Service is staffed with experienced professionals, some of the most skilled in the industry. We have the equipment, the crews, and the expertise to handle almost any job, and we have done so time and time again. We are also conveniently located just a stone's throw away in Barberton by the skate park on Norton Avenue. The tragic incident in which a young man named Noah Hall recently lost his life due to a fallen tree struck, it struck me very deeply, not only as a professional in the tree care industry, but as a mother. I actually still talk to his mother, Ashley, very often. This is the second time in less than a year that I have received a call from the fire department, not just Barberton, the other one was Akron, requesting assistance with the body recovery after a fatal tree related incident. These heartbreaking situations could not be, I'm sorry, should not be reoccurring. They are preventable. Barberton currently lacks an ordinance addressing nuisance trees, which means there's little to no protection for the residents, neighbors, or renters who may be living near hazardous disease or dead trees. Implementing a formal program would significantly improve safety throughout the city, provide peace of mind for residents, and most importantly, reduce, help reduce the risk of future tragedies. If such a program were to be adopted, and if needed, Barberton Tree would be the first to offer our services and expertise. We have multiple ISA certified arborists on staff and extensive experience working with other municipalities that already operate similar programs. We would gladly assist in evaluating trees for risk, developing, developing a structured plan, and even helping design a fair pricing or payment model that makes the effort accessible and cost effective for residents in the city alike. We have already been doing this for community members, customers, for over 55 years. Joining me tonight is one of my site, my ISA certified arborist, Adrienne. She is an ISA certified arborist and utility arborist. A tree, she has her, she holds her tree risk assessment certification and plant and tree health appraisal qualification as well. She also serves as our contract coordinator and works closely with several municipal, like nearby municipalities, including the city of Akron, and their nuisance tree programs, and is here to offer her knowledge and support to the city. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak on this critical matter this evening. I hope we can work together to establish a proactive and life-saving tree program here in the city of Barberton. If anyone has any questions, Adrienne has been so gracious to expend her time tonight. If anyone does have any questions with anything that we do with some of the other municipalities around, if that's allowed.
Yes, Mrs. Thompson.
You can't see me over here, I'm only five feet tall. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming. As you know, this is something we've been working on for quite some time, so I just really appreciate you taking the time out of your evenings to come speak on this very important matter. Now, I had met with Adrienne last week, and she was talking a little bit about, you know, working with the other municipalities. If you could just briefly kind of go over some of those things with the other council members, just so they know kind of how that works with the others.
So most cities and municipalities do have their own individual arborist. They will get the call that there would be an issue with a tree, either from a neighbor or the city can identify those themselves. They would pass that along to the arborist. The arborist would then do what's called a tree risk assessment on it. That is a qualification that I hold. But once they would call in and find a contractor that they wanted to use, they would contact me. I would also go out, usually assess the tree, give them a quote, and then we would perform the tree work for them. So the programs they have set up are all across the board, from contract pricing, where every tree has a unit pricing, to, you know, putting it out for bid and asking, you know, local companies to give them the best price. We believe that a contract would be the best, and it is the most cost effective, so you never have to worry about finding somebody. You have them locked in a one-year or a three-year contract. Sometimes, you know, you call, and I'm sure everybody's dealt with that before, you call a contractor, or three, or five, and maybe one gets back to you. So it would help the city, having somebody under contract who was, you know, willing to do it for that price every time you called. So that would be my biggest recommendation going forward after you did vote on it, would it be how you wanted to structure it best, to make sure that you weren't wasting more time, as well as, like Lisa mentioned, I would be willing to help either train or myself do those tree risk assessments, so it wasn't a he said, she said situation. It would be somebody who's qualified to do tree risk assessments, and it wouldn't be my neighbor's tree is bothering me. It would be my neighbor's tree is dangerous, and that would be validated by somebody who was, you know, an industry professional, which is very important. You don't, I guess, minimize the, the quality of the, of the program by allowing neighbors to just kind of, like I said, point and choose what they do not like, have actual defects and actual hazards that, that may get a nuisance, not the other way around.
One of the things for, that she was saying, and before we get to the next point, I wanna make sure, so most of the contracts in the municipalities, for as long as I have been there, are more double strip trees, parks trees, city-owned property trees that are under contract. Because obviously, when you get into neighboring backyards, you get into some serious technicalities. Obviously, pulling up to a double strip tree and working in big open parks is much different than working in some tiny yards where you have houses. Then you're going on private property, which adds a whole other factor there. So most municipalities do the contracts based on those. There's one in particular, I'm not even gonna mention the municipality, 'cause I don't know how that works here, but we'll just say that there's a municipality, they're a neighboring municipality, and what they do for their residents, they have an arborist, as Adrienne mentioned, they then, if someone reports or if the arborist in the city sees that there is a dangerous hazard tree on someone's property, they notify them, they issue something like a ticket. Again, that's probably not even the right word, citation of some sort. They issue that to them, they tell them that they have 10 days to remove this very dangerous, this hazard tree. I believe it's 10, it might be 15 days now. Again, don't quote me specifically on that. Once that is issued, then the homeowners have time to go out to anyone they wanna choose. They can get anyone to take it down. The city doesn't care, they just want it down, because now they've deemed it dangerous. At that point, if the homeowner does not do that, then they would take the tree down, they order it taken down by a contractor who issues the, like, the price to the city, and as long as it's acceptable, they take it down and it gets assessed to their taxes. I will say this municipality has worked with homeowners, where I've had to call into them, let them know, listen, they're on the schedule, it might be 30 days, it might be 60 days before we can get out based on our backlog, and as long as they know it's in the works, the city works with them. So they're not just coming in and telling people. It's mainly for major situations, they, they have to order it down. I understand that this might not be ideal for whatever, however that tax works, that they have to go back and put that on someone's taxes. I'm not saying that that would work here. I'm just saying that's one example when it is in a private property situation, that's how they do it. I will say that one thing I can tell you guys now is I would offer for Adrienne to help with, I'm not sure which department it would be, with council, public service, if you guys wanted to look at some of the other contracts from the other municipalities, between herself and me, she's out every day with them, I've worked with them, I've worked with those contracts 28 years, would be happy at least to offer that to get something started. Some more questions answered, just wanted to, to offer that.
Yeah, the, it runs the gamut to what, and I've found that there's places that run efficiently, and then there's places that just use it as a way to take the liability off of themselves, and it's not really to help the residents, it's to just make sure that the city doesn't get in trouble. And it's not really to help the residents, it's to just make sure that the city doesn't get in trouble. And I know Barberton wants to have something in the middle, where obviously you guys don't have the liability, but you're not going ahead and forcing residents to do something that wouldn't be, wouldn't be necessary. So, yeah, definitely can help with lots of knowledge in that way.
Have any other questions? You're always free, I think everybody in this room pretty much knows how to get all of me, so... If you're, if anybody has...
You know where to find her, yeah.
Anybody has any questions, feel free to ask, we're really here to help. We want to see this done for both sides, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
We try it out.
Thank you, ladies. We have committee reports now. Emily Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, Street, Sidewalk, and Lighting Committee met at 6:00. We had one request for legislation, a letter from Todd Shreve requesting to appropriate $230,000 from the unappropriated item of the Street Capital Fund to the capital budget of the Street Capital Fund for concrete program. And that was all we had tonight, without a pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Mr. Heideck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Playing Ag Cessation Codes has nothing to report, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, sir. Next up is City Utilities. City Utilities met on July 14th, 2025. All my members present?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes?
Probably Mr. Griffin.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair should do it.
Jim has to do...
Well, we'll get it from him, because I'm sure he has it.
No, Jim is Environment Health.
But she's your Vice Chair.
She's my Vice, yeah, right. Yeah. She has to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
City Utilities met July 14th, 2025. All members, except myself and Justin Greer, were present. Request for legislation, a letter from Todd Shreve, Director of Public Service, requesting legislation to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to OPWC for four infrastructure projects, emergency wording, and one reading requested. Also, a letter from Councilman-at-Large Thomas Heideck requesting a resolution condemning First Energy's reliability of service and requesting $100 credit to Barberton residents, emergency wording, and one reading requested. And that was it, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up, we have Monty Harris, Public Welfare and Safety.
What'd she need to do tonight's report, Mr. Griffin?
For the special meeting?
Well, we're having that later.
She's got a call for...
She is, we're in a special.
Okay.
We also had a special utilities meeting tonight, July 21st. All members of the committee were present, except for Justin Greer. We had one request for legislation, a letter from Todd Shreve requesting legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint application between the city of Norton and the city of Barberton to apply for the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program to provide for the financial assistance through grants, loans, and loan assistance, or local debt support, as outlined in the attached agreement. Emergency wording and one reading requested, as the deadline to apply is September 5th. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Ready for committee reports? Monty Harris, Public Welfare and Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Public Welfare and Safety Committee met on July 14th here in Council Chambers. We had two pieces of legislation requested. One was a letter from Lisa Colish Miller, Law Director for the city of Barberton, requesting legislation to amend the Barberton Codified Ordinances, Chapter 670, Trees, Weeds, and Grass, to include three new sections. Emergency wording and one reading requested. I passed out of committee. And then we have a letter from Chief Morber of the Barberton Police Department requesting legislation to appropriate $10,000 from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the police department's operating and maintenance budget of the general fund. Funds will be coming from a received MDT keyboard grant from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. Emergency wording requested, and funds must be spent by the end of the year. We referred that to finance, we voted out of committee, and with that, I pass.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes, I just wanted to talk for a second about the ordinance. Thankfully, Councilman Harris and the mayor have caught some, a little inconsistency in here. I just need to make sure it's, works in cooperation with the Tall Grass Ordinance section, or Tall Grass section of our codifieds. What it may just be is rescinding the grass portion and just putting everything in this one section, but I need to make sure I look at that in the next day or so. I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. Next up will be Rebecca Gerhardt, Rules, Marketing, and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Rules, Marketing, and Development met on Monday, July 14th. We had requests for legislation, a letter from Ms. Schifferly requesting legislation to approve the 2025 through 2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan Budget. We passed that through committee. We also had a letter from Law Director Miller with our proposed charter amendments, and we passed 17 proposed charter amendments out of committee that evening. We then also had a special meeting this evening, July 21st, where we reconsidered two charter amendments, and those also left committee. And with that, I pass.
Thank you. We have up as Mrs. Hager again. Environment, Health, and Social Services.
Thank you, Vice President. Environment, Health, and Social Services met in Council Chambers this evening, July 21st, 2025. We had one request for legislation, referred from Utilities, a letter from Councilman-at-Large Thomas Heideck requesting a resolution condemning First Energy's reliability of service and requesting $100 credit to Barberton residents, emergency wording and one reading requested. And spoke briefly about positive West Niles virus, found in mosquitoes, and some just kind of common sense things on how to prevent them. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. We have City Properties, Parks, and Rec with Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We met City Properties, Parks, and Rec on July 14th. We had one letter from the mayor requesting the appointment of Ms. Nina Angelo to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term beginning immediately in Indian 1231 of 2026. That was voted out of committee, and we have nothing further to report. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Easterling. Next up will be Finance and Personnel. Taylor Thompson, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. Finance and Personnel met last week, July 14th. Council voted on all legislation. We went over that evening, as well as the finance report for the month of June. Then this evening, Finance Personnel met at 6:09 here in Council Chambers. We are calling for the following legislation. The first being a letter from David Polichek requesting legislation to appropriate $24,363.02 from the unappropriated line item of the general fund to the fire department's operation and maintenance budget in the general fund to pay an employees to life force management for ambulance billing. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Next, we had a referral from Streets, the request from Todd Shreve, our service director, requesting legislation to appropriate $230,000 from the unappropriated item of the Street Capital Fund to the capital budget of the Street Capital Fund for the concrete road program. Emergency wording, one reading requested. And then, last but not least, we have a referral from Safety, a request from Chief Morber of the police department requesting legislation to appropriate $10,000 from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the police department's operating and maintenance budget of the general fund. They will be coming from a received MDT/keyboard grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. Emergency reading requested. And with nothing else, we adjourned at 6:12, so with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. We have a report from the Council President. I just want to thank everybody for being respectful and patient with me these last couple of weeks, and it'll get better. And I just want to let everybody know I enjoy doing this. I enjoy the city, I enjoy trying to do the best I can. With that, do we have anything from Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Change for Change is Friday at the Hungarian Club for Lexi, a Barbertonian, battling cancer, so I hope to see everyone there. Magic Mayhem is back on for August 29th before their first home football game in the middle school parking lot along Newell Street. So, information has gone out about that. Health District Meeting this Wednesday will be in the mayor's conference room downstairs, same time, 4:30. In addition to the report on West Nile, there's also concern of ticks and fleas, another reason why you need to keep your grass cut, cut low. MAG does a great job if you request for them to come out and spray your backyard. They'll do that once, free, and they're very quick about doing that. Lastly, legislation will be coming your way to support Community Development Block Grant funding. This is an important program, as we've seen, coming through HUD from the feds. We want to make sure that this grant is funded here in the future, so... That's all I have, unless there's any questions. Yes?
When are we fixing the air conditioning in the other courtroom?
Don't know.
It's hot.
So, parts have been ordered, so we're just waiting on them to come in at this point in time. Originally, the report was six to eight months. I think we've gotten down to that.
Oh, wow.
Six to eight months?
Six to eight.
Might as well order two of them.
That was also a part that was, I don't know if they're, I don't, I don't know exactly what happened.
Was it damaged during the demolition?
It was damaged right after the building came down. We had that big windstorm, and we believe that windstorm actually blew that, because there was a wind block when we had the building there. You remove the building, and now that is the first thing that you see on the roof. So, we believe that the windstorm blew that over.
The unit wasn't secured to the roof?
It creased the line, so it's, there's no holes in the roof. So, that unit sits on feet. I didn't know that until Lee had to come down and explain. We've sent, but they were four or five foot feet, they're now 12 foot feet. Because he's put two, or you have two four-by-four-by-12-foot treated pieces of lumber underneath of that unit so that it won't happen again. We got a part, it was the wrong part, part was shipped back. The right part, like I said, we got the report, was six to eight, like I said, I believe it was eight months.
It'll be a winner, right?
We would, yes. I said that to get to that, just, you know...
Maybe it'd be, like, next spring, it'd be just perfect.
Again, Lee worked with, Jazz Eye Mechanical, I believe, was here. They think they've narrowed down a part on a new supplier. They're just waiting on it to come in, and they're going to see if it'll fit.
And I just want to commend Holly Evans from the Planning Department for getting the houses taken down like lickety-split. A house on Reese that was, I was constantly getting calls about is down. A house on Northview, there was probably... How many houses? Five or six? I think six houses in Ward 6 that were just sitting there. So, we're still waiting on some others also.
Yeah, I think we had a total list of, what, 27 to start this year?
Yeah. I think at least over a quarter of them was in Ward 6. So...
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the gentleman earlier, the sidewalk, or the grant we have for upgrades at Lake Ganna, if I recall, part of that was going to be used to make the sidewalks better. You might correct?
I believe the grant is specifically for the visitor center.
It would not be able to use for any other upgrades?
I'd have to confirm that, but I believe it's for the visitor center.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gerhardt, did you have your hand up?
No, sir, I lost that thought. Oh, my hand was up, but thought is gone, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A request has been made by Stacy Carr, Planning Director of the city of Barberton, to enter into executive session to consider the purchase or sale of property. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. Mr. Heideck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to enter into executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, I'll second that motion to enter into executive session.
We are now in executive session. After. Mayor, roll call vote by Mrs. Price.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.